Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Independent City Council meeting. It's Tuesday, February 13th, 2018, at 6:30 in the evening. Let the record show that councilors are here except for Kathy Martin Willis, who had a work conflict that unexpectedly arrived upon her. Councilmembers, we have minutes from previous January 9th and January 23rd meetings in front of you. Are they okay with you? Is that a yes or not?
Yes.
I move to the minutes as presented in the packet. Second. Have a motion second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. We, under visitor comments, we have Vicki McCubbin. I told you we'd get right to things.
Yeah.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening, thank you. Once again, I'm here for the museum. And you hopefully have seen the signs around town advertising the celebration. And I believe you have an agenda item coming up later for it. But I wanted to let you know that our history hunt starts Friday. And there will be clues around town. And our goal with this, being a retired teacher, is to celebrate independence, educate independents, and reciprocate independents. We're trying to help and support downtown merchants and have them help us. And I, if you would like, I have a birthday on the corner.
Thank you. Thank you, it's okay.
And that's the end of my comment.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I do appreciate that. Is there anybody else with any other public comments to make at this point? I see, don't see anybody hustling to the microphone. In, following up, I'm going to issue a proclamation that, you know, independence was settled and founded in 1845. And then it was officially incorporated in 1885 on February 26th. And now our city has grown and has transitioned from that small rural town into a vibrant, small, all-American city poised to embrace the future. And so I hereby declare February 24th as a celebration of the birthday of the city of independence. And I'll sign that later and I've officially proclaimed that. Okay, well, thank you, Erica. Thank you for that. I think we have an oath upon us. And Keith Mason, I think you're going to lead us through parts of this.
Mr. Mayor, I will gladly lead us through parts of this as long as you'll provide some help if you want us.
Yes, I will.
Excellent. Council, Mr. Mayor, tonight I am very pleased to pronounce our newest officer and introduce him to you. His name is Richard Gonzalez. Richard is replacing Officer P. Roy, who retired in early January, but still continues to work course occasionally. So, Richard, could you step up while I speak about you a little bit here? So, Richard started with the Independence Police Department as a reserve officer in November of 2017. We had a full recruitment and he came out on top of that and was hired as a full-time police officer in January of this year. Very happy to tell you that Richard is a graduate of Central High School, class of 2010, making him the second of that class that is serving as a police officer here for your city. Richard grew up here and he continues to reside in Independence. He is fully bilingual in Spanish. He is an active member of the Army National Guard where he serves as a combat engineer. Richard is going to be starting the police academy this Sunday, but he'll be back in June in time to work Independence Days, so. So, Mayor McCardle, if you would be so kind as to go into the office.
Sure. Keith, let's do a little videography here. Step up here, raise your right hand. Aye, say your name.
Aye, Richard Gonzalez.
Having been duly appointed by the Chief of Police.
Having been duly appointed by the Chief of Police.
Say on oath.
Say on oath.
That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
The State of Oregon.
The State of Oregon.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Independence.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Independence.
That I will perform the duties of the office of police officer.
That I will perform the duties of an off-- of--
Of the office of police officer.
Of the office of police officer.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now, family, come on up. This is, yes, this is history. Come on up. Erica, get the cameras out. We're going to take a couple minutes because we're a friendly place to be. Everybody get up here. Everybody in. I got to tell you, this is one of the funnest things I get to do. Congratulations. Congratulations, Mom and Dad, for raising a son that can be an officer in our community. Everybody good? All right, congratulations. Okay, I have a number of things in my report that I'd like to talk about. And get your accusations on a couple of things, please. As you know, in December, we had Sean O'Day from the Midland Valley Council of Governments come and visit with us about succession planning. And what he talked about is that there are a number of search firms that we can use to fill the anticipated opening of a city manager position. And that they would be willing to help us identify some of those search firms and that we could bring to council so that you folks could get used to them and pick which one we'd like to work with. And what I'd like to do is get that started, if that's okay with you, and work with Sean and city staff. And they'll put up, provide the names of three and help us schedule the meetings in, by the way. Three search firms to come in and make a presentation to you. And then we can decide which search firm we would like to use to select our next city manager. Does that sound okay? I had a question. Please do. Is there an immediate need to hire this firm or are we just chopping around? What we're doing is that Mr. Klein and I have been in communication about this. And this is not a surprise to him at all that I'm doing this this evening. And he has not come up with a firm date. The market has been a little bit up and down, so there's a little figuring. But this does fit into the timetable that Sean O'Day talked about for us to move that process so it's in the appropriate place. Do you get that?
Yeah, I have not ordered the umbrella drinks yet or anything.
We're still a little bit up in the air on the travel plan.
Yeah, I haven't bought the commode shorts yet or anything.
No, but this is more than--
But you're standing.
This is more than just sniffing around. This is actually-- Is that, is that, everybody okay with that? Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was fine. I want, the city of Independence was recently honored by the Midland Valley Council of Governments recognizing our outstanding partnership of local governments within the Midland Valley for a project or initiative that enables, that enhances regional intergovernmental cooperation. I'm going to pass this around and let me read just a-- I'm not going to read the whole citation, but I do want to bring it to your attention. "The Independence Landing Project in downtown Independence has become a stellar example of how a city can collaborate with the state and regional entities in order to develop a project of regional significance. The city undertook the Independence Landing Project to spur economic revitalization in its downtown and put the community on the map as the center of Polk County's growing visitor tourism industry. The many collaborations have paid off with $42 million hotel and residential development scheduled to break ground in March. The announcement of the hotel project has spurred additional interest, filling downtown storefronts, and the recent announcement of a planned $5 million downtown mixed-use building. As independence is downtown, the region's economy prepares for a massive jump for it. It is the partnerships and collaborations that the cities have with other government entities which made all of this happen." There, if you want to read the whole citation, but I will tell you that they were very impressed with our working with a number of local governments in the region, borrowing some of their planning staff and folks with experience in projects like this as well as a number of state agencies. And so I just want you to know that. And I think you can take a look at that if you care to. And if, just kind of rolling into my next thing, I had a meeting at Mahoney Hall. A number of us with regional solutions met with the governor yesterday. And she came up to me, gave me a big hug from across the room and said, "How's that project? I'm so excited about it." The words out about independence. I'm excited about that. Also, yep, yesterday was a busy day. I had the opportunity to, with a number of other elected officials, meet with Congressman Schrader. And we talked about the, he shared with us and we shared our concerns. He talked about the upcoming debate in Congress over the state of Dreamers in the United States. He's pretty passionate about that, just like we are. And we don't know how it's going to turn out, but it's going to be one of the more important conversations in our country. They also talked about the importance of the census and what is and what is not being happening. We, there was an extensive discussion about net neutrality. And he serves on the House Commerce Committee with the chairman, Republican, but from Oregon, Greg Walden, who is the chair. And there's a real interest in net neutrality, not just in Oregon, but around the United States. It's hugely important. We also had a discussion about the upcoming drought. Water levels are low and trying to get the appropriate money appropriate, appropriate, okay? That's, but to make sure that they have the dollars and cents for wildfires. So I just wanted to do, let you know about that. The other thing I wanted to say is that, gosh, it was a week ago. I had the pleasure of delivering the state of the city address in front of the Chamber of Commerce. I want to thank staff for helping put some wonderful visuals together. We worked together on the, on the writing of it and I really appreciate it. I know several people were able to attend. And I think it's going to be posted.
It is posted. It already is.
Oh, okay. So if people want to know what's going on, that's a good place to see. And it was fun and I really appreciate the Chamber for doing that. So that's the end of my report at this point. And Mr. City Manager, I think you are going-- What we're going to do is we're going to vary the agenda just a little bit. Our city attorney is here today and we have a couple of-- We have one thing we're going to do before then, then we're going to jump down, have her do her part because she needs to catch a very early morning plane out of the area. And so we'd like to get her out and about and then we'll jump back in. Does that sound okay with everybody? So, Mr. City Manager, I think it's to you now.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, we have one other acknowledgement that we'd like to do in this forum for another award placement that we've received in NACAE. So I'm going to give you a little background of this and I may have a word or two as well that have been honored, the people that make this possible for us.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
There are 25 water systems in Polk County. And every three years, the Oregon Health Authority does a survey, what they call a water sanitary survey. And the result of that survey is whether you get a three-year or a five-year inspection. Currently, of those 25 systems in Polk County, only two have achieved the Outstanding Performer Award. Of those two, only one of them is a municipality. So I would like to congratulate the Advanced Public Works for being the one municipality in Polk County that has got the Outstanding Achievement Award. He's been here for 19 years. This is Nick Ash. He's been here for 10 years. And this is Travis Gibson, which you might recognize, has been here for five months. Please thank the general for that project.
Great. I'm going to use this as my own guide. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So, just, just to say, you know, sometimes we don't get the best press on what we do in terms of our water system. Having achieved an outstanding water supply is truly, it really is quite an achievement. And it's nice that people go home and turn on their taps for that kind of water, for sure. It's safety.
So, on behalf of the council, myself, the council, thank you for what you do. I know there are very many parades or very many fireworks that get exploded in your honor, although there should be more fireworks. Thank you for what you do. Thank you for providing a safe and quality service. Thank you for the customer service that you provide all of our community. And it's what you folks and the whole staff, that customer service really makes a difference in how people perceive our community. Thank you very much.
Let me add just one other thing. One of the things we did, when we changed, when we reorganized the community public department, we hired a public works director instead, was to give direction that we'd like to start seeing accreditation the same way that we do so in our police services. And to provide that level of service and certainty that you know, day in and day out, we're getting the best level of service and the best practices. So that's something KIAE's team have dedicated themselves to. And I think KIAE deserves a little acknowledgement for this first time, this first award.
Yay! Thank you. And as always, you're welcome to stay, but we're not offended if you want to go home and eat dinner too. No, we're not offended. Are we? We're not offended. We're not offended. Okay. We're going to go out of order now and we're going to go to the telecommunication franchise agreement. Mr. Klein, Ms. Munson, I think this is your moment. Telecommunication franchise agreement. Wherever you care to be from.
So, Chris Munson is with our law firm of the Local Government Group, Spirit. I enchief them to the presentation on this. This is, we've been working on this franchise, we have it for quite some time. A lot of effort, as with many of our franchise agreements. So with that, I'm just going to turn this over to Chris to talk to, give you the outline of where we're at, where we're at, yes, at this point.
Thank you. Good evening, welcome to the Independent City Council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Kristy Munson of the Local Government Group. I have before you today in your packet on page 20, a franchise agreement with an outfit called Salem Broadband. And we've been working on this franchise agreement for quite a while. Pieces of the puzzle kept shifting on us, but we're at agreement now. And we got to an agreement primarily because the council took the bold move of adopting and changing your telecommunications ordinance of about a year ago. And it really helped us come to an agreement. So the three key pieces of this agreement are your existing municipal co-chapter thirty, your telecommunications ordinance, the resolution on page 19 of your packet, which provides your city manager the authority to sign the franchise agreement should you pass the resolution. And then, starting on page 21 of your packet, is the actual franchise agreement. The franchise agreement nicely now doesn't have a whole lot in it because most of it is in your ordinance, in your chapter thirty, in your ordinance. So we will be treating all providers similarly. Everybody gets the same terms, but they're providing the same kind of services. And so now our franchise agreements are easier to administer. But this agreement is a standard agreement. It's very similar to the ones you provide to other similar providers. It applies the franchise fee that you adopted in your resolution seventeen fourteen fifty. So there's no, there's no quibbling or negotiating the franchise fee. It's existing law. And it is for an outfit that provides telecommunications services. Right now, they're currently only occupying conduit underneath the city. But they have plans to provide services to businesses and large entities and hopefully someday to residences inside the city of Independence. They're very eager to partner up with you. And I have no other comments. It's a long time coming. How do you have any friction for them?
Questions for the presenter? Is everybody okay? Not any of you? Really appreciate you taking the time to put this together. Is there anything else that we need to do before we go to vote on this? No, okay. If someone would like to make a motion?
I move to adopt resolution eighteen dash four, one four seven one. A resolution authorizing and delegating to the city manager authority to enter into a non-exclusive franchise with Salem Broadband LLC for the occupation of the city's right-of-way to provide telecommunications services.
Second.
Have a motion second. Is there further discussion? Here, no discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for your time and effort in making this happen. I really appreciate it. And have a pleasant evening.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you. We're going to go back, backwards now. We're going to go up to unfinished business, okay? Council vacancy appointment process, what we-- Do you want to go back to your managerial report? Oh, excuse me. My error, I was in the air. Go ahead, back to your city manager report. Aye.
You don't have to. I just, I'm not offering that.
We, we look forward to your managerial report.
So, I actually, I apologize in advance. It's actually relatively lengthy, but I'll try and get through it fairly quickly. So, a number of different things. First, excuse me. You did get through the proclamation, correct?
Yes, I did.
Okay. So, in honor of our first birthday at the ripe young age of 132, we are actually going to have our first birthday party on the 24th at the Heritage Museum from 1:00 to 5:00. So if you'll mark your calendars for that, you might participate in the birthday party. I don't think that was mentioned earlier. Trying to. So, a number of things. So, the Local Government Personnel Institute is part of the bad news. The board on which I serve for the Local Government Personnel Institute has been struggling for quite some time now to make that operation flow to, you know, cash flow. And it is for several years now. And without really any notable success. At the end of the day, we were doing roughly $11,000 in the red every single month. Last Friday, the board convened a special meeting. And at that meeting, voted to terminate the organization as of June, as of honor before June 30. The need for the services hasn't disappeared. And so we will be, both as managers and league and other interested parties, will still be trying to engage the conversation and find another way to deliver many of those services. And those services are supported in collective bargaining, general technical assistance in human resource matters, salary setting conversations, creation and, you know, modernization of job descriptions and the like. So they just provide, they even access to legal support at no additional cost to the members. And a part of the reason they're having problems is the no additional cost throughout. So it's been a, you know, it was a good model for years, but it finally didn't work for a lot of different reasons. So anyway, that's what's going on. We will be again trying to resuscitate at least the services. I think the organization's done. Along the lines of collective bargaining, we now have openers. We now have opening negotiations with all three units. So I will find a time here in an upcoming council meeting to brief you on any initial proposals received. No proposals have changed hands yet, but they will soon. All our, all three of our unions have contracts that are coming due at the end of June. So we work hard to try and have new contracts in place shortly thereafter or before, if at all possible. So that's, we'll be working on those. Again, those are three different units. Gives me something to do with my spare time. So, one of the things, I just wanted to sort of update you on this. Our video Oregon Stories begin here. We are now, I have 50,000-plus views on that, over 300 shares, over 60 comments on the site. It has gone out on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram and the like. And it's just continuing to sort of spread around. We get tremendous number of very supportive comments, but a few critiques. But by and large, just a whole slew of very positive comments on that video. And we're very proud of it. I think it really did the job that it was intended to do. The mayor mentioned State of the Cities, the video from that. First off, that, you know, from my perspective, I think that went very, very well. I think independence has ever shows well. A lot of those, and we have a lot of stories to tell. And, you know, we do our best to get it in a timely way. And I think it's all in the presentation. The city, the actual video has been posted on our Facebook. People also find it on our Twitter feed.
Hey, Marcus, Jason. YouTube.
YouTube. Yep. We're sort of all over the media as ever, but it's an interesting, it's an interesting view. Definitely a significant contrast between the communities. Interesting view. Homeless Advisory Board. We have our kickoff meeting coming up on that very shortly. The new Homeless Advisory Coordinator, Allison Trichel, Trishel, is her name, I believe. Works for this council of governments. That's a new position that we agreed to financially support among several other communities, primarily Salem, Kaiser and Marion County. And we, she got around all the communities, spent some time with us, spent some time with all the other communities that are members of the intergovernmental agreement. And so we have our first board meeting coming up here very shortly. So she's working hard and fast and hopefully we can get some good information on that process and some planning efforts underway. Let's see. Reminder, the city quarters ask me to remind you that the Chamber Awards banquet is Friday, March 2nd at Healy Hills Wine Cellar. Social hour begins at 5:30, program starts at 6:30. Please let Karen know if you will be attending. Please do that later than February 23rd, 10 days from today. And if you are bringing a spouse to the county or a partner, that cost will be $45 for that person. The city will pay up your cost. We have a table. I don't know if there's still space available at the table, but Karen will feel like to sit with our table or, you know, the city table, anyway. And there you go.
And, excuse me, the city of Independence was also nominated for an award.
So I understand. So we'll see how we do. It's a nonprofit organization, I believe, of the year or--
Not, well, not that we're supposed to be nonprofit, but nonprofit or organization of the year.
Yeah, we are nonprofit. Despite our rumors, the contrary, we are nonprofit. And that's how we were tenured, right? Mayor mentioned the recruitment process and the like. I do, I did tend to set up something with the county directors this week in case that's, actually, you did want to know some, I'll follow through with that. And we'll get, we'll get you started there. Try to make it a leisurely process so you never have to get stressed out throughout the period of time. So, you know, when the, when the date comes and I switch to my, you know, my flip-flops, you'll be well, you'll be well taken care of. See, the site design review and the foundation plans for the hotel have been in. Site design review has been, the draft of the conditional approval is being viewed by the development team just to make sure that it's accurate from their perspective. Otherwise, that's ready to issue that approval. And the foundation plans, you know, which will lead to the groundbreaking. They're under review right now in the building department, so that shouldn't be, that shouldn't take too long. He, he's already given it a fair amount of review and thinks it should be fine. We are still pursuing a mid-March groundbreaking. The mayor's working awfully hard to give us the top level of support for that. And so we have a big date to it to figure out what that schedule looks like. But looking right in the neighborhood of the 13th still, or--
13, 14, 15-ish.
Ish. So if you want to bike out your entire calendar for that week, we'd love to see you there. We truly would. It's your, it's your project. And I would even, I would agree from the, just acknowledging the word that the mayor spoke about, about that project. I mean, in truth, it is very much your project. And this has been a team effort that went into this thing was, you know, was well received by the folks who are there, maybe a little bit of, damn, that independence kind of thing. But otherwise, you know, though we showed our video at that presentation, I think that was, you know, again, a little bit of envy and independence envy. I don't know what it is. But anyway, I think it went over very, very well. And I was really proud to be part of that evening. It was a darn good show, our team, our staff team, that all put that together as well. Anyway. all put that together as well. So, anyway. Hupman Heritage, last year, if you recall, we, the festival, we did not do that in deference to the drain on volunteered services from the Eclipse. This year, it's not off to a quick start, and in truth, Aida has, has, has offered its willingness to step up and assume the, the festival. So, that's literally consistent with our commission approach to it, that I have no problem, you know, deferring to Aida to do the work if the council has no problem. There's nothing that says we have to set the commission loose on this. I think it's perfectly fine that Aida take it on and, you know, do, come up with their best event, you know. I don't think there's gonna be any disagreement from this group.
Is there, is there still a viable commission?
No. It's part of the problem.
Okay. Is there still a commission on the books?
Well, there's certainly membership on the books, and there's a commission, but I think they have not met, and the last few times, it was very short on, on attending. So, I think, let me, you know, and again, that has a lot, also, a lot to do with the Eclipse, but even before that, I think we've had a couple of bad years, and I think there's just the need for new energy, new direction, and Aida's willingness to step up to the plate, I think, makes it, from my perspective, a bit of no-brainer.
Is there a need on the part of the council to disband the commission?
Yeah. Not now.
And is there any, just for my own edification, because I will be helping with this project, is there any budget in the commission?
Well, the budget for the commission, the budget for the event has always been a pass-through budget. What the event is made is, is basically allocated. It's never been an entire match either way, but it gets close enough. So, if the event comes up a little short, it's supposed to, the city is, you know, supportive of it, and if the event comes up, you know, with more money, that goes into helping out the next year's effort. You know, so, from our perspective on the books, it's mostly a pass-through, as is in Independence' case.
Thank you.
In Independence Landing, Riverfront Park, we're at the point of reviewing 90% documents. So, we will be 90% completion for the construction documents, so we will be looking at bidding that project in short order. We, I think we have talked to you before, and I'll repeat if I haven't, that even though the legislative allocation, the $1 million piece, if you recall, there's a $400,000 grant, a $1 million legislative allocation. That allocation doesn't come, isn't fully realized and available until spring of '19. However, they will enter into a contract with us early, and basically, it's also put us on the topical list, so that we can borrow against that, that vending allocation. So, if you have no objection to that, I think at the end, it's pretty much a wash, because, you know, if it costs us a bit of interest, it will also net us a better price, given what we're seeing is constant rise in hiking construction costs over the years. So, we'd like to, the goal for us is to move out and get this work, this work underway this summer, and, and get it done as best we can before the hotel opens its doors.
That coincides with some information that I received from our representative, Paul Evans, that it would be good to get this money spoken for sooner rather than later.
So, just for clarity, this is the amphitheater park, or is this the portion below Independence? Is that the portion below Independence Landing or Osprey Landing?
Yeah, yeah. It is, yes.
Yes, because we're still working on, we're still working on the master plan.
Yeah, so, three parts to that. So, we have the Independence Riverfront Park, which is, is basically the trail and park setting on the lower tier of Independence Landing that, from civic center here out to the hotel side connects up, it will connect up with the future extension of the trail through Riverview Park. The second piece of this is the paddle, you know, the paddle launch, or, you know, the paddle launch that will be building right at the old sign of the, the river crossing at bottom of the city. So, we're still looking for a little bit of additional funding. Sean's applying for some more funding for that. So, that's probably, and possibly, a separate project. And then, there's Riverview Park Master Plan effort, which is, is underway in the next, the next meeting on that, which should be in March, where you can start looking at some, some events a little further along, planning on that, on that piece. Thank you. Get ready.
Yep.
Okay. Thanks, your person.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, for your, I, I, last night, I had the pleasure, I think I've told you about this event, and we had it, the, the, an evening with Abe. Abe showed up to give us a little presentation about, as of April 1865, of how the war, the state of the United States was. It was four years into the war, and looking like it was coming to an end. And Abe did a really nice job. He filled up Maxi's Ballroom, and we had a lot of great questions, a lot of great questions. We had a little, we had a little guy, about three, I don't know, six-years-old, maybe, dressed like Abe, and he had a better understanding of history from that period than I think most adults in the room. He was a pretty amazing little guy. So, he had, he had beard, the whole thing going. It was, it was pretty amazing. For those that you have missed it, if you do want to get an opportunity to see Abe again, we do have a second appearance in Polk County. He will be at the Fairgrounds on Saturday, 1:30 PM, at, at the museum, the Polk Museum, the History Museum. And so, that is a second opportunity. It is really, I don't know if Barry has seen the show, I'm gonna make sure that the rest of you have, but it really is an amazing presentation. And, you know, even Karen said she thought she saw the best link in Back East. Said you can't beat that out here. She, she, she changed her opinion.
Well, I said probably.
Yeah, I said, yes. Her probably got away with it, but I don't know if it was a yes. Yeah. So, anyway, that was great. That was fun. I got you introduced as our, our Mr. President. So, the new rural innovation catalyst is on board. That's a shared position with Secor and the city. So, that's a position, I've continued, though, working on smart ag and innovation funded through the Ford Family Foundation and Secor. So, we will see a lot of that focus on Independence, even though it is Polk County-wide, but given our involvement in this, we'll, we'll expect that we'll get our share, more than our fair share of focus. And that person has, I said, I think she started, started Monday yesterday. So, it'd probably be kind of a responsibility to be introduced in the, in the near future. The gift that keeps on giving, Civic Power and Light helped us organize a downtown tech adventure Saturday. While we don't have specific numbers about turnout, it was, it was nice. Lots of people in and out, from in-town and from out-town. They came on downtown to kind of walk the walk. It was kind of fun. I walked in, and there were lots of, you go to four different locations and just get these, the different world, the different worlds of tech, from 3D printing to, you know, virtual reality. Look at, I got to fly over the, the, go to the top with a wind, a wind power generator, and watch it take it apart from however many hundreds of feet up it is through my virtual reality. Look down at a hydro facility, almost at the grass, if I didn't get, fall off the edge. So, it was kind of a whole lot of fun. That was really nice. And just a bunch of other things. With new comic book was shared, new Independence comic book was shared, put together for, for attendees. Lots of swag. So, it was a, it was a good effort, largely funded by Civic Power ourselves. We were recovered by KPAU News. Thanks to the library for making space activity, activities. OSU was there with their mobile makerspace. Intel to talk to the farm, to track farm before tracking project. And CSC, our Halo's substitute, had youth helping with crowds that set up and take down. So, just a, a nice combination of things. Couple of people sitting out in the cold, brave in the cold, and weren't entirely dressed for the occasion. Felt for them, but I still went inside. So, we had a team, speaking of Civic Power, they hosted a pub talk on January 30th. Focus was on smart rural communities and smart meters. We're getting a lot of marketing mileage out of that. Good attendance. The CEO for Civic Power was there, along with many of his, his high-level staff. So, you know, people are, you know, Independence continues to be on the map from these efforts and grow our presence. Sean was able to speak at a National Global City Teams Challenge Conference in DC. He was originally scheduled to go as an attendee. They latched on to him, he had three passes to speak while he was there. So, the only small city that was present, representing, you know, the global city, the global city challenge team. So, again, the name is getting out there. Doing great work, taking advantage of our, you know, our fiber presence and our, you know, the high-tech that we have here, and the branding that we're creating around it. We're still working on the airport master plan. Kai and Sean were attending the last advisory meeting. That's to help update that master plan. That's being run by the State Department of Aviation. I mentioned the Riverview Park concept work, open house in late March. Let's see. Finally, we are developing a rural-to-be-initiative grant for Business Oregon. We are being well-received on that as well, because of the focus that we've taken. It's made, we've made it past the first round, preparing for the final stage. Program would fund entrepreneurship, develop in rural communities, and rural community that we have in mind is Independence. Working with partners like Merritt Oregon Entrepreneurship Network and RAINN, the Regional Acceleration Innovation Network. Thank you. That's OSU and University of Oregon and around us. That's what I have for this evening. Any questions for the manager at this point?
When is the date for the next Riverview Master Planning meeting?
Should be in late March. We don't have a specific date.
Okay, now, say it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, now I can go on to unfinished council, unfinished business, council vacancy appointments. As you know, we, last time we, we spoke, we agreed to put out applications, and then we were gonna talk about process tonight and how we're going to move forward with that. I've been informed by the city recorder that we have eight applications. I have not seen the applications. I don't know who all the, the people are, but I thought that we talked a little bit about the process, and we can do it a couple of different ways, and I have a suggestion. We could interview everybody, but that would take, you know, first of all, tonight, after we may figure out our process, we'll be given the packets, so each of you can take a look at who's applied. We have two ways we can move forward. We could do interviews, although eight interviews gives a lot of interviews to do. Our other city attorney suggested that we might want to consider, and I think it's a good idea, that if we each take a look at our applications, and if we report to Karen our top two that we'd like to interview, then she can compile that, and then we can have the top, top people identified. You're not ranking people, you're just which two you'd like to have, and have, and have those folks invited into either the next council meeting, or if you wanted to have a special council meeting, to, to spend some time with those folks prior to making a decision. What do you folks think? Does that sound...
I would go with that.
This conversation.
I just, I just wondered, maybe we should have a, I don't know what you guys think, but maybe a special meeting in between somewhere in here, so we can get this moving along. It could be my thought.
I, I would think we could do a, a Monday meeting, the day before the regular meeting. Then we don't have to try to squish in anything else. I don't know. What if you...
That sounds great.
Does that sound okay with folks? Then we could just focus on that one thing that evening.
And if we have more than two, if the third one really looks good, can we put the third in?
Well, if, if we start going, we can go two or we can go three. And then, we'll just see how that, that flows out, and then, what do you want, two or three?
Maybe negotiate with someone to get a second.
And because, and this will cut, this will cut the field, and we'll try to get to two, two or three, and we'll see where the natural break is.
So, are we just going like...
Who you want to interview is received in majority.
Well, what if everybody gets two separate?
Well, there's, there's one, two, three, four, five, and then Kathy is six. And so, that's 12, or if we do two, it's 12 or 18. And if, if everybody's all tied, then I guess we interview everybody, but I think there's gonna be some sort, I think there's sort of...
Okay, so we're going by who's gets them.
Maybe we can cross that bridge.
Yeah, I think so.
And we can, we can do it. Does that sound okay with folks, as a process? Okay. So, here's what we'll, so let me just make sure that we're stating it correctly. So, what we'll do is Karen's gonna hand us the packets at the end of the meeting, then we'll have those. You're gonna take a look, and how long do people need to read things so that she... What we want to do is make sure that we get to her, our, our choices to her in a timely manner, so that she can let the people who need to be prepared to come to meeting that evening, ready? Does that sound, does a week seem like enough time for everybody? So, Karen, by the closing of business on Tuesday, next Tuesday, is that's okay? And then, you'd be able to let folks know when to come in? Does that sound all right? Council sound okay with everybody?
The plan is to have to meet the Monday before the next council meeting.
Yeah, that would be the, is that, is that 26? Okay, so we'd be a special council meeting. If you'll do the paperwork, Karen, on that, then we'll, then that way, we can focus just on that, that evening. And my thought is that we're gonna go to a decision, if that's, you know. And I'm gonna say for people on TV and people in the audience, there's eight people and there's one spot. And so, we're gonna, we'll each take a look at what we think would be the best for our community. And I hope no one's gonna feel there's some people gonna be left out. And I just hope that people will be understanding, and we're gonna move forward. Okay?
What time do you want to have that meeting? Same as this, 6:30?
Does that, does that sound okay with everybody? And I know, we haven't talked to Kathy, but I'm gonna guess she's gonna probably, with some leave time. So, the 26th at 6:30, I'm gonna put in my calendar right now.
I'm doing that, too. So, on the 26th is when you want to be interviewing the top two or three, whatever.
Yes, please. Special council.
Next Tuesday, we have different choices.
Right. Next Tuesday, we have to have everything in to you, council meeting.
And then, assuming we make a decision on that night, the person would be in place on the next day.
That's right. Yeah. Okay. Hold on, I'm still sticking my thing in here. Okay. Just trying to make sure I'm on speed here. Okay, and Karen will hand those out afterwards. If there's nothing more we have to do on that, then we will continue forward. Is that okay? Okay. Let's go to Officer Edlin. Excuse me, Sergeant.
Good evening, welcome to council. Thank you, Mayor, council. So, I'm in your package. You should have received my memo related to the annual license for noodles for OLCC. It's a few pages long. If you guys have any specific questions, if you want to look through some of it in greater detail, but I can just hit the highlights if you have any specific questions.
I'll go ahead and hit the, the highlights, because I know everybody read this.
Okay. So, we, what we did, there's one, there's some question that I need to kind of look into a little bit, and I made myself a note for that, because these licenses actually renew at the end of March 2018. So, as far as like the stats that we've been pulling, we've been pulling the previous year, so 2017. And so, I didn't look at calls for January, February 2018 in annuals, but I can tell you that I had a, a recent contact at the arena that made me a little bit more concerned, where there was a fight at the bar, and we were never notified. We ended up getting called later, after the fact, by a victim. And they were, they allowed us to take a look at their video. They were, they assisted us in that manner, but they just weren't the ones that called us, and that kind of annoys me a little bit, and I'll, I'll deal with that specifically with them. But I need to look at that and see if I need to start adding the January, February stats to these, annual reviews, or if we just take the 2017 calendar year. That's less than one incident a month for, over that 12-month period, with six DUI arrests. I would say that it's not super concerning for me. Some of the BAC amounts are a little bit concerning, because they're pretty high. Some of the BAC amounts are a little bit concerning because they're pretty high. But I don't, I don't have any specific concerns that I would bring to you guys.
Has, has the ownership of the arena been cooperative?
They historically been cooperative, yes. And I haven't spoken to them about this incident that I talked to you about tonight, which probably isn't super fair to them, but I figured that you deserve that if you have that question.
Thank you.
Any questions? When you have your visit with them, you might want to mention that questions were raised.
Yes, I can do that.
But that's warm and friendly, but questions were raised.
Yes.
Any questions? This is an action item.
It's on page 42, and I move to recommend approval of all the liquor licenses upon receipt of the city fees.
Second, motion second, discussion. Is everybody okay? All right, good then. All in favor, say aye. Aye. And opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it, officer.
Sergeant, I keep going on that?
It's okay. It's all good.
Okay, any council announcements? If not, I, I just got a question. Sure. At the fourth quarter, Independence Police Department report. And I just maybe wanted to get a sense from Chief Mason, is this, I mean, it looked like probably a normal year, but is this on par? Are there any trends that are concerning you or anything like that?
No, it very much is on par with pretty much most of our earlier reports.
Okay, good. Thank you. Any else?
Yes, on the Independence Hop and Heritage Festival, it will be returning as the Hop and Heritage Block Party. And it sounds like it's got some good momentum already. And of course, anybody who's interested in assisting with this event is welcome to come to a meeting of the Independence Downtown Association.
Great. Okay, so remember, turn your stuff in to Karen by next Tuesday. If you're going, if you'd like to go to the Chamber Awards Banquet, see Karen. There's, there are friends here.
Yes.
After the meeting, see Karen for your packet. Anything else? See Karen. Okay. And otherwise, we'll see each other on the 26th, Monday, the 26th at 6:30 for that special meeting. Would somebody adjourn us? Move to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We're done.